Great. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call a meeting of Monday, June 1st, 2020 to order. First off, any disclosures of interest? Counselor Sharp?
I have a disclosure for a report, FIN 2009. My parents own one of the houses in that report.
That will be noted. Thank you. Seeing no other disclosures of interest, first up, we have the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes of May 19th, 2020. Need a mover and a seconder? Oh, sorry, we have to do roll call first. Counselor Bothwell?
Yeah.
Counselor Dunstall?
Here.
Counselor Frake? Counselor Frake's waving. He's here. Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell's here. Counselor Ritchie?
Here.
Counselor Sharp? Counselor Sharp's here. Counselor Vane?
Here.
Counselor Vardy?
Here.
And myself, I'm here. So, as I said, adoption of the previous council meeting minutes from May 19th, 2020. Need a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Bothwell. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Bothwell. Resolve that the minutes from the May 19th, 2020 council meeting be approved. Any discussion? Seeing none, Counselor Bothwell?
Right. Yay.
Great. Counselor Dunstall? Counselor Dunstall's a yay. Counselor Frake? Counselor Frake is a yay. We're having trouble with the unmuting, I see. Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell is a yay. Counselor Ritchie? Counselor Ritchie is a yay. Counselor Sharp? Counselor Sharp is a yay. Counselor Vane? Counselor Vane is yay. Counselor Vardy? Counselor Vardy is yay, and myself is a yay, so that is carried. And our first report of the evening is Report Corp. 20-04 Corporate Leadership Team COVID-19 Response Update, June 1st, 2020. CIO Schlang?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. On behalf of the corporate leadership team, it's a privilege to present you this report. We last gave you an update on April the 20th, but we've provided an update tonight for council. Again, the purpose of the report is to talk to you a bit about our operations, a bit of the economic recovery, the financial components, and of course, where do we go from here? Again, all along, the health and safety of our employees and residents were paramount in, you know, right as soon as the emergency was called on March 12th. But we've also been cost-conscious and mitigated the impact of these events in the 2020 financials, and we'll show you that. In some of the background, Appendix A shows you all of the chronological events of the emergency, and I provided this again in this report. On May 28th, there was another update that wasn't captured in the report, and that is the health professionals was opening up dentistry, physio, chiropractic, and it was funny on that announcement, we weren't even aware of it. We found out through the news media a bit later that day, but it just shows how flexible we have to be in adapting to the needs of this emergency. On April 29th, the premier talked about a regional rollout for the first time. Up until then, he's talked about going out together as a province, but recognizing some of the numbers across the region, it'll be a regional rollout. And then on June 1st today, our Prime Minister talked about advancing some of the federal gas tax, and our treasurer sent an email out to you today that it doesn't, it's not new money, the 2.2 billion. There's about 800,000 we get our federal tax, and they're advancing the second payment of that to July. So it is no new money to offset any of our operational impacts, and it needs to be spent on capital. So as far as the emergency control group, we're meeting once a week now. Most of our efforts are now going into recovery. We provided some information on some of our operations, particularly the fire department, fire services. We've seen some declines based on the not-so-much activity in the town, but as soon as we say that, we're seeing a bit of an uptake the last week. But we have seen a bit of a decline in some of our emergencies. On the communications front, it's been very interesting, if you look at the report, of just how much our residents are taking up on social media and our websites. You know, you're seeing increases of over 150% in some hits, as well as, so you're really seeing some Twitter accounts that have really improved. So you're really seeing the sort of adaptation of our residents towards not the phone-in channel, but the social media channels. So that's been very positive, and I think it's something we can build on as we continue to look at different ways of providing services as we move forward. Also, we wanted to provide a little bit about bylaw, a bit of the view of what we've seen in bylaw complaints. And I have to say that it's been great working with the Grimsby residents. We've received more compliance through education and cooperation. We haven't laid one ticket, but that doesn't mean we're not taking our eye off the situation, and we continue to work together, not just with bylaw, but some of our parks and roads crews doing patrols periodically throughout the day. In our economic recovery efforts, I have to say Nancy Simon has done a tremendous job reaching out to some volunteers on GDAC who actually call local businesses and help channel them into some of the programs that are out there, or provide some good news stories on how other businesses are working to adapt to the new normal. And they've reached out to about 200 local businesses already and continue to try and work with them on if they need any support on any of the programs that are out there. On the government relations front, I think you've heard that we're working together with the 11 municipalities in the region to do this together. We're stronger together to lobby the province and the feds for funding for operational impacts. And across the region, there's about a 50 million gross impact across 11 municipalities, 12 in the region. And, you know, in the document, we talked about, you know, ensuring that we get operational grants for the impacts on our operations. And we also talk about moving down from the one-third contribution on any infrastructure, future infrastructure grants, from 33% to 20% contribution at the municipal level. As well as, we're going to be working, the region's going to be working with FCM, which is 5,000 municipalities across Canada, as well as the 444 in Ontario at AMO, to continue to lobby the province and the feds for some support for our operations. We also, as you know, we've put in two applications for the Canada Infrastructure Program, both the expansion of the Peach King Center valued at 22 million, and the Water Main Replacement Project on the Green Stream Funding. And we really want the government to approve those to help with some economic stimulus. They've committed to the end of spring, which is around June 20th, so even if that's delayed, the big thing here is we want them to approve those projects so we could encourage some economic prosperity in our city. One thing we've been really proud of, working together with council and the community, is enhancing the community spirit in these times. And the library's done a great job with looking at virtual library collections. That's increased by over 160%. We've looked at some work with the art gallery, The Light of Hope, where the mayor and the other 11 mayors in the regional chair developed some videos, and then there was a regional video to develop some inspiration. Sarah Sweeney and the team worked very diligently with public health to open up the farmer's market. There was a lot of effort to move it from Main Street to the Peach King Center, and that's, you know, gives people hope in the future of what's going on. The community gardens have been kicked off. We've looked, and you're all aware, but we've, the partnership that Fire Services, that Steve Ellingham, Stacy, and Chief Bill, and Sarah Sweeney worked together to make that happen. 42,000 pounds of food and over $30,000 contributed to our community, which was just fantastic. And we've continued on that in Town Hall. We're doing a food drive here as well, just to continue on to help our local community. So, and then for Canada Day, we're going to do a virtual Canada Day celebration, not with fireworks, but with some other features that we'll be introducing soon. So now we get to the financial impacts. As you know, from our April 20th report, the team and with council's approval, you know, acted very quickly in adapting to, you know, the reduction of services and the reduction of funding that we were going to receive. And we did temporarily lay off quite a bit of staff pretty quickly right out of the gate. So if we go to the operational impact on lost revenues and increased costs, just wanted to talk to you a bit about these. The interest on investment income, that's self-explanatory, where the interest rates have reduced from what we forecasted for the 2020 budget. The waiving of late penalties on taxes, as you know, we, the last council meeting, we expanded that to September 30th. That has about $135,000 impact. General administration is something like the POA, the provincial offenses, tickets, you know, the courts aren't open, so we're not collecting that revenue. Some marriages license reduction and finance tax certificate reductions. In Fire Services, some of our MTO recovery inspections, registration and training have been reduced for about 51,000. And then, of course, the big one with rec culture and parks, a 732,000 forecasted reduction in revenue on mainly rentals, memberships, registrations, and advertising make up most of that lost revenue. And then, of course, the library with the author series lost about 50,000. Planning and development-related, what we mean by that is application fees, development applications overheads, and supplementary taxes, you know, not getting the role and impact quick enough for some of these developments. So that totals about 325,900. So from a lost revenue perspective, we're at about 1.4 million. If you add in some of our increased costs that we're forecasting to the end of the year of 200K, we're at about 1.6 million in constant lost revenues. Now, there's some additional impacts that don't affect the levy. One is some revenue losses on the permits. The town has earned about 13% of its building permit and related fee revenue, but this is not an impact on the levy. It's a deferral of revenue. We eventually will get that, and that can be offset by a reserve that's set up specifically for that. And then as well, and this is something that, you know, more of the interact costs, we spend about 1,000 hours. We keep track of our time at the EOC, as well as any things we have to do to mandated by the province to meet or working with the region, and we've spent about 1,000 hours of that. Of course, it's not a direct cost, but it's an opportunity cost that we're not spending on other activity. So as I said all along, we've been watching, you know, the year-end forecast, and I'm really glad that council gave us till June 1st because we were able to do a deep dive, not only on the revenue loss, but also on the mitigation impacts that we're forecasting to the end of the year. So we work with the benefits provider, because a lot of us, you know, physio and some of the benefits weren't being provided, so we've asked for a reduction. We got a 42K reduction there. Fire Services has looked for reductions and 28,000 there. Public Works is mainly through the, you know, reduction of not calling in our casuals all summer, so we're looking at 100,000. And then the rec culture and parks, the 623 savings there is mainly wages and benefits. People we've temporarily laid off, people we haven't hired, students we haven't hired. And then the library has also done a good job with looking at some temporary layoffs, and as well by canceling the author series. And then a lot of our open vacancies that we had in our base budget, we periodically staggered those throughout the year. You know, where we had budgeted maybe bringing in people in Q1, we're bringing them in late in Q2, or where we thought Q2, we're bringing in late in Q3, and a number of them were postponing to Q4, those hires. So that saved about 326,000. And then, of course, we're, you know, the strategic priorities that council approved, we're just moving them to sort of the back end of the year to Q4, and that will save us over 435,000. So at this point, knowing what we know and forecasting out to the end of the year, we're able to balance the projected losses and increased costs, and we're going to continue to monitor this daily. We feel that the next point we're able to do another deep dive on this is around August, first or second week of August, to see what we're doing with the Peach King Center for the winter season, and see how we can offset some of those impacts. But what we know now, we're able to balance any type of loss or increased cost. So going forward from here, a lot is on recovery. We're getting ready to, we've done a lot of work here at the Town Hall to get ready to open it when that time comes. Things like Plexiglas for safety of our employees, debit cards, the way we're going to handle them. We're doing a lot of training on that, you know, wearing shields, wearing masks where possible, where we can't promote social distancing. So we're doing a tremendous amount of work now on recovery, and that's where we're spending most of our time. Again, we're reporting that back to the EOC weekly. But again, as we move forward, we've realized that we have to be very fluid and agile. We just heard today that the premier may extend the emergency to the end of June in the province. First time we've heard of that. We'll find out exactly tomorrow at the legislature. But again, that impacts, you know, when we think we're opening Town Hall and opening up various types of services as we move forward. And I think this takes us back to another, you know, deep dive report in August. But I would like to go back to the recommendations now and hope we get council support on the four recommendations we've put forward. Thank you very much, council. I'm able to take any questions.
Thank you, CIO Schlang. Questions, counselors? Counselor Dunstall? I don't see the speakers.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you to our CIO. I guess I'm just curious, because you're getting ready to reopen, and this is a basic necessity of life, and they're just not open yet, and there's public washrooms, and I've heard a few people make comment that nothing's open when it comes to public washrooms, and it's becoming, it will become an issue, and we will eventually have to open them up. And how are we going to manage that, I guess, is a real good question for you.
Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Dunstall. Yeah, we went through that protocol today, looking at our public washrooms here at Town Hall. We have been working with public health, and there's a cleaning protocol that you have to do, and so we're figuring that out. In some areas, do we, you know, not allow access and, you know, ask for someone to come and open the door for them? So we're looking at those types of protocols right now, so.
Will we do anything about parks? Are we going to leave that alone for the summer? We used to have the portlets out there.
I don't think we had any.
Yeah, we used to. We probably pulled, we pulled them during the
Yeah.
state of emergency, so we'll leave that alone. Yeah, okay.
Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Dunstall. That's part of the recovery, and we'll be looking at that as well, because you have to clean them.
Oh, yeah.
Just open them up.
Yeah, 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 it's an issue. Okay, thank you. Great report, by the way. Great report. Thank you.
Counselor Bothwell? And then we have Counselor Vardy.
To CIO Schlang, please. Just a couple of questions. Are we delivering customer service at a normal pace? If people inquire for a planning application or a building application, are we delivering customer service? Or are we telling them we're postponing it? So are we delivering our full services, is my question, right now? And what, you mentioned overtime was an added cost. I'm just wondering what, how we're incurring that overtime? And my third question is, I see that the Main Street study is deferred to Q4. I'm assuming that staff are working on the terms of reference for that, so we'll be ready to go for Q4 to go for an RFP? Those are the questions. Thank you.
So, Mayor to Counselor Bothwell, and the first question, yes. It's funny, right after the long weekend, planning applications are really, there's a tsunami coming in, so it's really, it's really coming, and we're providing the best customer service we can. It kind of flooded in right after the long weekend. So we are preparing, and we're looking at ways to make sure we have the turnaround times that are needed, so full service there. The overtime is mainly with bylaw. You know, we want to cover the weekends still for a while. We're getting great compliance, but like we're being told, we can't be complacent. We got to continue to monitor and educate and inform, and it's worked really well in Grimsby, so I didn't want to stop that yet. And the Main Street study, just because of the influx of the planning applications, we will get on to that. We do want it going out in Q4, so we will definitely work on that, Counselor Bothwell.
So I guess we have to have the Heritage Committee active because they have to review it. So I'm assuming those two things will tie in together in the next month or so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Vardy's up next. Thank Counselor Frake.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to CIO Schlang. Thank you for the report. I guess I just want to reiterate that the Main Street East study is really of huge importance to this town, and I want to make sure that it's given some kind of priority attention so that come Q4 that we're ready to go.
Thank you, Counselor Vardy. Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're having trouble with the mute and unmute. I'm not sure what's going on. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor, to CIO Schlang. First of all, great report, very comprehensive. Congratulations to the team. I'm sure they've done certainly a lot of work and a lot of analyzing, and it really puts things into great perspective for us, and thank you for that. I'd like to refer to page 11 of your report, which is under cost savings and mitigation. I know there are deferred revenues and there's lost revenues. I would assume deferred revenues really have taxes. I guess that's a straight yes or no answer. Are there any other deferred revenues?
Stephen, can you help me with that? I am going to get the treasurer, Stephen, to answer that, just to make sure.
The next question is basically around the same thing.
Through the mayor, yeah. Hi. Through the mayor, so basically, building department revenues would be the deferred revenues. And that would pretty much be it. Of course, taxes wouldn't be deferred revenue, because we record the revenue as soon as we bill.
Yeah, what I mean is, if it's deferred in terms we haven't received it yet, we'll get it down the road.
Yeah, the cash.
But it's, yeah, but it's registered in our books.
Yes.
Okay, the other question is, and deferred, there's deferred costs and real costs. So how much of that is on page 22 or page 11, is deferred cost versus just real cost savings?
So when you say deferred cost, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, deferred cost, I mean, for example, hiring of someone is deferred. I mean, that's a cost we're going to incur one way or the other, whether it's now or whether it's down the road. It doesn't defer to cost.
Okay, yeah.
Real cost is something we've saved, and we're never going to have to worry about paying it.
Yeah. Most of those costs are projected not to, that we're not projecting to spend that are in there.
So we're not going to spend a VIA transit service?
Potentially, until the fourth quarter.
So it's deferred?
Yes. They're postponed, yes. The cost would be postponed or deferred into a later date, yes.
Okay, you understand where I'm coming from.
Yes, I do, yeah.
Okay, so under Fire Services, is that a cost that we're never going, it's not deferred, it's just a cost that we've saved right now?
Those costs will be saved throughout the year.
Okay, so those are actual real save costs?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any others like that? Are all of those benefits, Fire Services, Public Works, Recreation Facilities and Culture and Library, are they all save, like real save costs are not going to be deferred?
Not right, not right now. Those costs will be saved as the year progresses.
Okay, so that's projected a bit too, is it?
That's right.
Okay, to the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we'll just keep it, well, I guess your plan is to keep that updated on at each council meeting?
I will continually update the costs myself, and then we'll bring another report back in August to update council as to where we stand.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Up next, we have Counselor Ritchie, then Counselor Cadwell.
Thank you, through the mayor. I just want to thank the CEO and all the other numerous staff that worked on this report. You know, you could go and, in our news every single day, you look at millions of dollars that municipalities were saying that were lost, and when we look at a report like this, I think it speaks, it's a huge testament to how well our staff has worked together, how well they've taken our budget and kept it under control and watched the expenses, and I want to thank them for all the hard work that they've done. Again, thank you very much, and we'll look forward to the report in August.
Thank you, Counselor Ritchie. Counselor Cadwell, you're up.
Can you hear me all right? Okay, yeah. Thank you, Mayor Jordan, and I guess this question is for our treasurer, Mr. Greninger, in respect to the federal gas tax, the payment in the 828,000 for, I believe it was July. How much higher is that to what we normally would be getting in the gas tax from the federal government? Mayor, I can actually answer that, because Stephen and I talked about it today. So it's the same amount. They're just advancing the second installment early. They're just accelerating the payment, but it's the exact same. Okay, great. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, need a mover and a seconder? The report moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Sharp. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Sharp. Resolve the Report Corp. 20-04 dated June 1st, 2020. We received, and the staff continue forward with the corporate COVID-19 response as set out within this report. And the town of Grimsby participate in advocacy work with the 11 Niagara municipalities and the Niagara region, and endorse associations such as AMO, Association of Ontario Association of Ontario Municipalities, and F C M, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, to address the need for direct financial support to municipalities from the provincial and federal governments. And that the federal and provincial governments accelerate and approve the two candidate infrastructure I C I P project applications submitted by the Town of Grimsby to stimulate economic recover recovery. And now as a recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell.
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall.
Yay.
Counselor Frake.
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie.
Yay.
Counselor Sharp.
Yay.
Counsel Counselor Vane.
Yay.
Counselor Vardy.
Yay.
Myself, I'm a yay, so that is carried. Up next, we have report F I N twenty dash zero nine, twenty twenty tax write-offs. Stephen Greninger.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So twice a year, we bring a write-off report to council. So repairs are allowed to apply under section three fifty seven of the municipal act to have their assessment reduced. If there are certain conditions that apply against their property. For instance, you could have a demolition of a property, you know, if there was a fire at the at your at your residence or business, or if there was an error in the assessment calculation. So so again, I bring this twice a year, once kind of in the spring and once in the fall. Attached in Schedule A are the properties that have applied for reduction under a reduction of assessment under section three fifty-seven. And if you have any questions about any of the properties, I can answer them. The total write-off town portion of the write-off. Let's see here. Sorry, about thirty-nine hundred dollars. If there's any questions.
Counselor Sharp, I see you have a question.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. This is the conflict that I have with this in this meeting. My parents own one of the houses on this list. They have torn down part of the house and they're putting an addition on it. So they've applied for a tax exemption, and I will be not voting.
Great, that is so noted. Seeing no other questions, we'll have a mover and seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Cadwell. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Cadwell, resolved that report F I N twenty dash zero nine dated June first, twenty twenty, with regard to tax write-offs be received, and the total write-offs in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred and sixty-three forty-six be approved. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell.
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall.
Yay.
Counselor Frake.
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie.
Yay.
Counselor Vane.
Yay.
Counselor Vardy.
Yay.
Myself, I'm a yay, so that is carried. Up next, we have report D P W twenty dash fifteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, winter materials application update. Richard, I think you were up on that.
Actually, I'm sorry, it's Brandon, sorry. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Oh, I saw Richard there earlier, so, sorry.
Yes, that's okay. I was gonna actually thank Richard for putting these reports together, so.
Okay, perfect.
So there are two reports we're bringing together to 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 you tonight, or both deal with winter maintenance. The first report essentially provides an update on some of our experiences we had in switching from the sand and salt blend to a straight salt for this winter season. We've outlined the details in the report, but I'll just give you a quick summary on on the kind of the pros and the cons, and I can hopefully answer any questions that you have. On the pro side, we just looked at our material costs and between the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen winter season, so that was using the sand and salt blend, and the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty season, so the previous winter, using straight salt, essentially the material costs were the same. The lower application rates when using the straight salt allowed allowed the trucks to be on the road longer, so resulting in in less truck trips back and forth to our yard to fill up. And also, the spring cleanup has required less effort, so less sand on the road means lesser less sweeper time and less ultimately less disposal of that material that's being picked up by the sweeper, so there was other pros. On the challenges side, the treated salt that we were using was causing our machines to cake up, so it was causing a bit of issue, and the application rate wasn't as consistent as we wanted. And also, you know, admittedly, it's taken some time for us all to get used to the switching from a straight salt to to the from the sand and salt blend, so. In terms of moving forward to the next winter season, so we will be switching from the treated salt to a bulk white salt, which is more cost effective, and it's not as prone to the the caking, so again, that should help with our that issue that we were having. Again, just just to note, this is the first year we're using the straight salt, and we've had a relatively mild winter, so we just need to be mindful that we we need to review this after a few more seasons again to better determine the ultimate success of of this change. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Great, Brandon, thank you very much for your report. Counselor Sharp was up first, then Counselor Cadwell.
Brandon, thank you. I've been I've been following this report since last winter, and of course, we don't get the data until summertime, but there was, I read the the report, and it looks like that last year, we used about one ton of salt and and about three tons of sand. And this year, we we used about one point four tons of salt and no sand, except for some areas on the mountain. And so that looks good. I at first, I had a little bit of concern that we were using would be using more salt. But but it's the difference seems negligible between one ton and one point four tons. And then it sounded like it's it sounded like the the trucks were were more efficient. Did that give them more time on the roads? Did that make, did that increase our proficiency or for for our road clearing?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Sharp. Yeah, so the essentially, the the trucks were because they're not being filled up as often, so the application rate for the salt material goes down on a lower application, so you have to put less on the on on the road. So essentially means you have to fill up the truck less, which means they're on the road more rather than filling up more, so yes, there was efficiencies in that.
Okay, and then with the so you said that we had, and I read the report, that we had a significant amount less street sweeping time and a significant amount of less disposal of materials from the street sweepers. Can you quantify how much savings? Even just approximately?
I I don't have that number in front of me. I guess the thing we have to be careful is there's not way to explain this is the staff are, we hire our staff for, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And efficiencies in not them not doing street sweeping means they're deployed to do other tasks. So ultimately, there isn't a savings overall. There is efficiencies in the fact that, you know, they're they're able to perform that task quicker and get on to another task.
Yeah, I understand that. And so so I applaud you guys for for being able to to move on. I mean, an example, and I'm not saying this is or isn't the way it happened, but that that staff could be used for for shoveling or or planting sidewalks or doing other areas. And so I know this year, we added some to our budget for an increased snow maintenance and and programs like this, which which give us efficiencies can can save us from adding in the future. So so I think that you did a very good job. I was cautious to see the report with the straight sand, but I think that that you've done well, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. Counselor Cadwell, you're up.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Jordan, and to Brandon, thanks very much for the report. Just a couple of quick questions, and I see the the party report is talking about staff hours, sweeper loads, and what about catch basins, Brandon? I know in the past, the town has had to go around with the the old sweeper truck and and suck up the catch basins from the the sand that would be obviously run into the catch basin. So is there anything that's that's involved with that at all? And then my other question, Brandon, is just is how many municipalities are using salt now? And again, I great, great work by by yourself, Richard, and and staff too. So just those two quick questions. Thank you.
So the first question, or sorry, the second question was how many municipalities, and I I don't have that answer. I could certainly look around and give you a correspondence later just to indicate kind of which of the local municipalities, Richard probably be able to answer that right off the bat, so I can certainly we can get back to you on that. And your first question again, sorry, was all with catch basins.
Yeah.
As it stands right now, I'm a little little hesitant to say we're we're going to stop catch basin cleaning. Obviously, there's still materials that get into the catch basins that have to be cleaned. What we could look at, like this year, we're gonna, one of the tasks that Richard actually suggested is going out and looking at our catch basins to see how much sediment actually is filled up in them. And then we can review essentially over the course of this year and next year to say, you know, how much is material is actually going in there? Could we look at maybe scheduling the program once every other year rather than every year? And 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 that may be a good course of action and some savings in that.
Good, good. Yeah, if I may, just a quick comment. I know with the catch basins too, you've got sometimes, again, it depends how much rain you get too, but you'll have water that can be like still water with mosquitoes and that too. Is that something that we have to be concerned about too, Brandon? Part of your checking, I'm sure, is that part of it too?
Yeah, so again, sorry through through you, Mr. Mayor. So in terms of the water in the catch basins, I know the Conservation Authority, I believe, had a spray program where they come in and they drop little pellets or something in in the water to keep the larvae from from growing, basically. So that that is one of the services that I believe is the Conservation Authority provide, so.
Great. Thanks, Brandon.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. Counselor Bothwell.
Hi, thanks, Brandon, for the reports. I know it's been a number of years of change between between trying different methods that work the best. And for the safety of our residents, as well as I'm sure that you're conscious of the environmental impacts, and that's what I'm just concerned about is how are we monitoring or managing the potential environmental impacts with regards to straight bulk salt when we're in the agriculture areas on the mountain? And do you have some strategy or some best practices that you use where it doesn't spray off into the sides and the shoulders and whatever? So I just wondered how you're managing that to minimize any environmental impact. Thank you.
I think you through you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess the the first comment I would make is is with respect to, like, again, if we're looking at street sweeping, the fact that we're not running a sweeper and adding carbon to the to the, you know, to the air. The fact that, you know, maybe the the snow plows are operating a little more efficiently, the fact that, you know, we're cleaning hopefully less out of the catch basins and less out of the sweeper that is being directed to a landfill. Those are kind of the things that that jump out me out at me. In terms of the salt, the 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 salt application is essentially consistent between the the years. The 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 fact that we're applying less sand is is kind of the key in in how we look at it. In terms of standards, we there is a environmental standard that the Government of Canada requires municipalities to have plans in place. We do have a plan in place that is is usually brought forward to council as part of our winter maintenance updates in in later in the year, which again, will be bringing to council again this this coming year for for further consideration and and information to to council.
Thank you, Brandon. And just on a side note, Counselor Bothwell. Up at our place on Ridge, it was a lot better this year with just straight salt than with the sand and salt. I think this the actual salt that stuck to the sand actually spread farther and caused way more grass damage the year before, so on a side note, it was it was certainly a lot less. So thanks, Brandon. Up next, we have Counselor Vardy.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to Brandon. I too was really curious to see how the numbers would roll out this year, because I remember Richard's presentation, and when we were moving to like no sand to just this treated salt, and remember some of the photographs that he showed, so you know, congratulations to you and your team for you know, going forward with this and coming back to us with this report, and I understand that in some ways, we're comparing apples and oranges, but it does give us a rough idea that there's definitely, if it's not not a cost-saving an opportunity gain. You know, in terms of being able to redeploy staff to to other things. One one thing, or just two things that I get a lot of questions about is there's no plow damage around going around corners. And I'm wondering how how you're coming along with some of those repairs. And then the second question is, I also get a lot of queries about cleaning out the ditches in the mountain, and I don't know how much they're being impacted by various you know, the salting, it's up on the mountain and all of that, how much that has an impact on the ditches, but I it's another area where I get queries. So I wonder if you could just address those two things.
Sure, through through you, Mr. Mayor. The first question, or sorry, the second question with respect to the ditches, yeah, it is common that sediment enters the ditches for a number of reasons, whether it's sand or from fields or just whatever passing by. We do have a ditching program that we have been complacent on the last few years that we're trying to get kickstarted again to start cleaning up some of the escarpment ditches a little bit more frequently. That being said, things have been a little difficult and unusual this year with staffing and stuff like that, so I'm not sure that that we're gonna achieve what we had expected this year in terms of that program, but we're certainly trying to trying to, if we can. If not, then we will focus on that next year again and put a formal program in place where we can get to these digits more often than than we have been in the past. And I'm sorry, I forgot your, oh, snowplow damage. So anytime any residents are aware of any damage caused by our plows, we'll just have them contact us, and we can come out, and we'll take a look at it. If we cause the damage, we usually have a crew that goes around and will add topsoil and sod in the spring, hopefully before it gets too too much warm and dry out, and yes, we will, we will replace any damage that caused by our plows.
And then take a look at the corner of McNabb and and Redwood then. All right, thanks. Thanks a lot. Great job.
You're welcome.
Counselor Sharp. Supplementary question.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. I just had one follow-up question to Brandon. So some of the residents in my ward are using Wolverton, and I wonder if this new sand and salt or straight sand mixture, did it have any impact on the closure of Wolverton? And can you quantify the the differences?
Just again, through you, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, are are you are are you speaking to the fact that the road was closed and whether there's some savings in the in the the road being closed? Is that
No, I mean, I'm talking about the amount of time the road was closed. Was the road closed more or less?
Oh, oh, sorry. This winter was a little bit unique because we we did the the actually scheduled closure from January to, I think it was the end of February for the retaining wall that we installed up there. That being said, we were still providing a salt for the to assist the contractor in keeping the access open so he could access with his equipment and keep it safe for the workers and everything like that. So and previous years, we do, we did still use straight salt on the escarpment accesses, if I'm correct. So there would be no change in in terms of the escarpment accesses.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for your report, Brandon. Great job. Need a mover and a seconder for the motion. Moved by Councilor Vardy, second by Councilor Cadwell. Moved by Councilor Vardy, second by Councilor Cadwell. Resolve that report DPW twenty dash fifteen dated June first, twenty twenty regarding the two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty winter materials application update be received. Recorded vote, Councilor Bothwell.
Yay.
Councilor Dunstall.
Yay.
Councilor Frake.
Yay.
Councilor Cadwell. Councilor Ritchie.
Yay.
Councilor Sharp.
Yay.
Councilor Vane.
Yay.
Councilor Vardy.
Yay.
Myself, I'm a yay. That's carried. Up next, we have report DPW twenty dash fourteen, approval for winter operations material material allocation. Brandon, again.
Okay, good. So again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So we participate with the region and local municipalities in bulk purchasing contract for the supply of sand and salt for winter maintenance. The current contract runs from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen. A new tender is being issued for the material supply from twenty twenty to twenty three. As part of the tendering process, the contractors need to know how much we and that's Grimsby and collectively the the group of people who are participating in this. How much we'll be ordering in twenty twenty so they know what quantity of material they'll be bidding on. So in terms of, we used fourteen hundred tons of treated salt in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And we are recommending we reserve the same amount in the bulk white salt for the twenty twenty one season. The unit rate for the treated salt, it was a little more expensive. It was eighty six dollars and fifty five cents for a total cost of hundred twenty one thousand, hundred and seventy dollars. And last year's unit rate for the same amount of straight salt was sixty seven dollars and eighty five cents or roughly ninety five thousand. So although we don't have a unit rate under the twenty twenty contract, we are estimating the cost to be around a hundred thousand dollars total. Roughly a five percent increase. Again, this is just estimating, could be more or could be less than that. And again, we're just asking Council here if you could support our recommendation for again, the allotment of fourteen hundred tons and approval to purchase the allotment for the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one season later this year. If there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Brandon. Any questions? Council Cadwell.
There we go. Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and thanks again, Brandon, for the report. We've been doing this with the region for a long, long time, and I'm just curious. You mentioned that the cost could vary. Do we have a in the stockpile in the salt dome? Is there is there a sufficient amount that would help us for next year, do you believe? Or I'm just curious how how we ended up this year that we could maybe be have, you know, what amount is in the in the salt dome right now, if you could?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I I'm not sure I can quantify that. Again, I certainly can talk to Richard about that. We can get back to you with how much is left over. Typically, there is a certain stockpile that is left over that does go into the, you know, the pile for next year. Again, that fourteen hundred that we're saying is essentially the same as the previous year, assuming again that there was probably some leftover from that previous season as well.
Yeah, just curious, Brandon. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Cadwell. Seeing no further questions. Thank you for your report, Brandon, and need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Council Frake, second by Council Dunstall. Moved by Council Frake, second by Council Dunstall. Resolve that report DPW twenty dash fourteen dated June first, twenty twenty regarding pending request for tender for winter sanding materials and town staff request to receive an allocation of fourteen hundred tons bulk white sodium chloride be received. And further, the staff be authorized to approve fourteen hundred tons bulk white sodium chloride through the Niagara Public Purchasing Committee, NPPC, contract tender for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one as part of the anticipated three year contract from twenty twenty to twenty twenty three, which will include supply, transportation, mixing and stockpiling. Recorded vote, Council Bothwell.
Yay.
Council Dunstall.
Yay.
Council Frake.
Yay.
Council Cadwell.
Yay.
Council Ritchie.
Yay.
Council Sharp.
Yay.
Council Vane.
Yay.
Council Vardy.
Hey.
Myself a yay, so that is carried. All right, up next, we have a notice of motion requested by Council Bothwell. Whereas bylaw number zero seven dash eighty one being a bylaw to govern the proceedings of council, local board and committee meetings, section two dot two, three, regular meetings provides for only one regular council meeting during the months of July, August and September. And whereas regular meetings of the town standing committees and advisory committees have been suspended as a result of and since the inception of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty, Council for the Town of Grimsby approved bylaw number twenty dash thirty one to allow meetings to be conducted by electronic participation. Whereas such electronic participation is utilized by council, the Grimsby Public Library Board and other municipalities within the region has enabled the resumption of regular meetings and allowed the advancement in municipal business. Therefore, be it resolved that council for the Town of Grimsby schedule two regular meetings per month for July and August twenty twenty to deal with ongoing and outstanding committee and council business. And further, that efforts to reinstate and schedule affected standing committee and advisory committee meetings using electronic participation re-prioritize to allow for business continuity and efficient functioning in municipal structure. I acknowledge that the notice of motion will be given consideration at the next council meeting. Up next, we have correspondence. Area municipalities, Town of Fort Erie, recove it nineteen, personal facial mask, Town of Fort Erie, re-support of medical association, staff association of Niagara Health and the Medical Academies of Lincoln, Niagara and Welland. Ministry of Health billing codes for the provision of virtual care COVID nineteen, city of Thorold regarding COVID nineteen government relations strategy. Any discussion on the correspondence? Seeing none, just need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Council Ritchie, second by Council Vane. Moved by Council Ritchie, second by Council Vane, resolve that correspondence received from area municipalities with reference to COVID nineteen personal facial masks, support of Medical Staff Association of Niagara Health and the Medical Academies of Lincoln, Niagara and Welland. Ministry of Health billing codes for the provision of virtual care COVID nineteen. COVID nineteen government regulation strategy be received and recorded vote. Council Bothwell.
Yay.
Council Dunstall.
It's a yay.
Council Frake.
Yay.
Council Cadwell.
Hey.
Council Ritchie.
Yay.
Council Sharp.
Yay.
Council Vane.
Yay.
Council Vardy.
Yay.
Myself, that's yay, so that is carried. Up next, we have correspondence from the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority Board Directors Meeting Highlights dated May twenty first, twenty twenty. Any discussion? Seeing none, mover and a seconder, please. Council Vane, Council Ritchie. Moved by Council Vane, second by Council Ritchie, resolve that the correspondence received from Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority with reference to the Board of Directors Meeting Highlights dated May twenty first, twenty twenty be received. Recorded vote, Council Bothwell. Council Dunstall.
It's a yay.
Council Frake.
Yay.
Council Cadwell.
Yay.
Council Ritchie.
Yay.
Council Sharp.
Yay.
Council Vane.
Yay.
Council Vardy.
Yay.
And I am a yay, so that is carried. Up next, before we go into closed session, any new business? I'll start it. I just wanted to say I had the pleasure in the rain on Thursday of raising the Niagara pride flag for Niagara Pride Week. And I just wanted to say that it it makes me very proud to to feel the inclusivity of of Niagara Pride and just the fact on social media, how positive it was is 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 just really a a great thing in in this time where there is so much negativity. I'm just happy to see the positivity there, and I was really proud of being part of it. Thank you. Up next, we have Councilor Sharp.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. First thing I want to talk about is I want to show support for opening our outdoor sports and the athletics. I have kids and my kids need to be outside and they need to be involved. They need to do these organized sports like if I can't just take away a year of their development in their life. And so I think it's it's valuable to our residents to do that. And I'd like to to show support as a council to to the province, and I'd like to ask them to open sports in Grimsby via a resolution. Can I do that now? Or when can I do that?
It is, pardon me. Yeah, we'd have to change the role or change the procedures and it'd be a
So this is new business.
You can't just bring a a resolution up during a new business. You did two thirds for suspension of the rules.
Okay, so then
Or you can bring forward a notice of motion that usually is pre-prepared.
I I don't want to, but my support is for for outdoor sports to open as soon as they can. I think that in Niagara, we have we have low enough cases, and and I'd really like to see our outdoor sports and athletics open up. I mean, the fields are open. And it's, we got baseball, we get soccer, rugby. The these things, I I'd like to see them happen. And so however, like, I mean, I'll send an email directly to Doug Ford from from my email address, but I I'd like the Town of Grimsby to to make some kind of correspondence with the province requesting that that we open up our outdoor sports. I don't know how to do that. It seems like a too long of a process to create a notice of motion to wait for two weeks. Like, if we make a notice of motion right now, then we can can't even discuss it right now, but we would go until next meeting where we would vote on it, and then it would get to the council by their next meeting. Like, we're talking Canada Day. They would get this resolution like a month from now. So, I mean, what's the point? Why why do we? Why do we make resolutions? I think we're not properly using the notice of motion. Maybe we can get some consultation from on how to do that. So because I have a resolution, I'd like to make a correspondence to the province.
You're you're welcome to to put forward a resolution to suspend the rules of procedure. And if we get two thirds, you can you can bring that forward. But you know what? You you have to prepare and and if you want something to be put on the agenda, you come in advance and get it put on an agenda and do it properly. You need to, you need to follow the proper procedure. So if you want to put a notice of motion on, you can do that. And I'm certainly not prepared to to go against the province. I'd like to see
I'm not asking you against the province. I want to I want to write a correspondence to the province. If there's a difference, not, we we want to ask the province something. That's what I want to do. Right? I want to say, like, please, I want to show support to the province to open outdoor sports. We're not go against them. I want them to allow it.
Yes, and 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 this is why you you discuss something like this and you bring it forward using proper channels and using proper Robert's rules procedures. You don't bring it up willy nilly in the middle
What's what's new business for? What do what do we do in new business, Jeff?
New business, you you can talk about something that hasn't been discussed before, but resolutions are not brought up.
Speed of order. If we could just restore decorum, it's Mr. Mayor, not Jeff. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, Mayor Jordan. So I, well, the discussion I want to have right now is that we're in new business and I'd
Mr. Mayor, I mean, you know, I got calling this last week. This is this is other business. If you wanted to put this on the agenda, Councilor Sharp, you should have. This is the wrong time to tie up this meeting with this particular request. I think it should have
I disagree. I disagree. Mayor Jordan just said that business hasn't been discussed before.
Yeah, and and you should have brought forward a notice of motion.
Well, so I'm in new business and I want to I want to discuss something. And the disgusting I want to discuss is how do we? How do we relay to the province that we would like to have outdoor sports open? Does the council even agree? Does the council agree? How do I counsel that question?
I think bringing this bringing this up at such a late time without
In new business, it's new business, Mayor Jordan.
You're still not following the proper procedure and you know
What do we do in new business? What is new business here for?
All right, you know, point of order, Council Sharp, but you're already getting angry.
I'm not getting angry. I'm talking. What's new business for?
Well, if you if you're prepared to change the rules of procedure and get a two thirds majority and
No, I just want to have some discussion. I just want to have some discussion about asking the province to to open outdoor sports like soccer.
What you needed to do is to bring a resolution to council before the council meeting, before Friday at noon and had your resolution brought so it could be discussed and it should it could be in the minutes of the the meeting or sorry, in the agenda on the meeting. So people, the general public would have a chance to comment on this. And the general public, as well as other counselors, would be able to to look into this without just trying to make a rash decision right at the last minute. So you need to follow the proper procedures. So and and we don't even know right now if if the province is going to extend at the legislature to legislation tomorrow. If they're going to extend it to June thirtieth. So quite honestly, doing this now is not following procedure. So
Well, so making a request, if we could Well, so making a request, if we could correspond to the province and tell them how we feel. Right? Before they make their decision, I mean, I can send an email constituents, people that are out there. If you want to, you can send an email to Sam Osterhoff, you can send an email to Doug Ford, asking for outdoor sports.
Yes, we certainly, anyone could do that as council, myself as a mayor could do that.
Residents could do that.
Residents can do that, yes, very, all facts.
So we can discuss it right now, too. And what I'd like is to, what is the town prepared? If if the province release, if the province takes away some of the restrictions, are we prepared to open outdoor sports? Is any council in agreement that it would be a nice thing to have our kids playing soccer and baseball?
Well, absolutely, absolutely. If the province lifts the emergency order tomorrow and doesn't extend it, it's already extended to June ninth. But I'm sure the director of Rec Services, Ms. Sweeney, I'm sure she has everything ready to roll out.
Is there a possibility that they'll lift it tomorrow? Is that is that a possibility?
I would I would think not, because they're talking about extending it to the June thirtieth. It's already, the emergency order is already extended to June ninth right now. So actually, there was a point of order made, and I've made the ruling and
What's the ruling? What is the ruling?
That we've discussed this far enough, and we're not going to discuss it any further right now. So new business, Counselor Frank. Reg can't get unmuted.
There. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick one. Thank you for being so patient with me over the last six months for as being deputy mayor. Didn't have much to do, but hopefully the next deputy mayor will have a lot more to do. And I believe the next deputy mayor is Leanne Vardy or Counselor Vardy, so lots of luck. And and hopefully you'll get lots of things done with the assistance of the mayor. Anyways, thank you very much. I just wanted to make that announcement because I don't think the deputy mayors get too much credit. So anyways, I just wanted to make that announcement. Thank you.
Yes, welcome, Counselor Vardy as deputy mayor starting tonight. Counselor Vane, you're up next.
Yeah, I just want to just want to do a shout out to one of our local businesses. I'm I'm sure that others are doing similar things, but I know of one personally. The Mark Wood, the owner of the Forty Restaurant, had put out a notice a few weeks ago, and I just spoke to Mark the other night about it. And he's offered that any child that is not getting able to get dinners or whatever, that they are to contact him and he will provide free meals to children that need it. And I spoke to him the other night, and he's had a great feedback from that, a lot of support in the community, and he's doing it both here and in St. Catharines. So I just want to thank all the businesses that are doing things to help others during this time. And just a special shout out to Mark and the Forty Public House for what they're doing. That's it. Thank you. And oh, and one other thing, I do support the idea, maybe, maybe we could put in the matter to vote about Counselor Sharp's request to suspend the rules. I would support that.
Yes. The clerk's going to clarify right now.
So under our procedural bylaw, new business for new businesses at a regular meeting of council, only business that shall be dealt with as set out in the agenda for the meeting. Right now, this item was not set out in the agenda, so it would need to waive the rules of procedure and require a two third vote. Thank you.
Can I ask for the two thirds or have a vote?
Yes, you can put in a resolution to waive the rules of procedure and do the two third vote.
If Counselor Sharp supports it, I will, I would like to do that.
Yeah.
All right, the clerk will prepare that now.
So before we we get into this, all I want is to send a correspondence to the province saying that the town of Grimsby would like our kids to be able to play outdoor sports as soon as possible, up to the province's decision. But but I would really like our kids to get outside. I see the sports fields empty. I see them being cut the grass. I have a one and three year old son, and my three year old is registered for soccer. And and they've moved him onto a waitlist. And so I don't know what we're going to do this summer, but like, we can't get this time back. And so my son will be four next year, and he won't play this soccer school. He'll play the next soccer. And that's the same for a lot of residents. And so all I want is to send a resolution, a correspondence to the province, saying the town of Grimsby would like if the province can find it safe for us to go outside and play sports.
All right, we have the procedural suspension. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Sharp, resolve that the rules of procedures be suspended in regards to section four dot thirteen of bylaw zero seven dash eighty one to govern the proceedings of council, local board, and committee meetings to deal with new business regarding support for provincial decision to open up outdoor sports and athletics. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell.
Yay.
Pardon me?
Yay.
All right. Counselor Dunstall.
Nay.
Counselor Frank.
Yeah, a long way to get to where we are, yes, but I'll go yay.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yay.
Counselor Richie.
Nay.
Counselor Sharp.
Yay.
Counselor Vane.
Yay.
Counselor Vardy.
Yay.
And myself, I'm a nay. So that So it's six votes, so six votes, so that can be, that's carried. So we can get a resolution together.
Thank you. So I'm open to the wording. I'd like to get the impression or the the message across that that we would like the province to do what they can to help us open up outdoor sports, specifically baseball and soccer. But I mean, there's other sports, too. So if it could just be outdoor sports, it's probably an appropriate way to word it.
Yeah, and
Only support, right, for
And but quite honestly, it's whether they extend the emergency or not. If the numbers are up and they extend the emergency, it'll be rolled out as soon as the emergency is lifted in any event, so.
I agree. I would just like to show the the province that that this council would like to have our outdoor sports open, and then they can make the decision. It's their decision to make. All right?
Well, yeah, I really realize that we'd all like to have everything back to normal and everything open as well. But the numbers, if 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 we still get positive cases that that start to increase and if there is a possibility of increasing positives, we certainly, it's I would rather the province or air on safety of everyone, so.
So the province will will take the precautions that the province takes, the necessary precautions that are required. So we can make a request or a correspondence, and then the province will make the decision. But we ought to at least make ourselves heard. We made a similar resolution about about hydro rates, right? And then the province
I understand. So I'll just do the same mover and second or I'll have Counselor Sharp move and Counselor Vane second, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Vane, resolved that the town of Grimsby council endorsed to the province or provincials report support for the reopening of outdoor sports and athletics. Oh, Counselor Bothwell, question?
So are we having open discussion on this topic? I thought we were, okay.
I was just reading the resolution, then we can discuss on it.
I think the resolution might have missed a bit on, I think. And maybe that's where we're a little, it's kind of got crammed in here without a lot of thought. I'm just, I'm very concerned about volunteers who offer to support youth programs. And I think the the province is being very cautious, understanding that it's the responsibility of the people who manage those those outdoor sports to ensure that the safety of the people that are participating and PPE and everything else is in place. It's not the province who puts the measure, they dictate what the measures are. And then the the all those steps have to be in place, and I think that takes time to do that. And I think ensuring that our volunteers who are going to be working in those programs are protected is key. So whatever message we send, I certainly agree that having our youth out and active and in sports is important. But as you mentioned yourself, Mayor Jordan, we have to follow the province's lead in when it's safe to do so. So I think as long as this, I think the wording might need to change a bit so that we understand that it has to, it is, it is when the province dictates that it's safe to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Vardy?
Yes, well, I'm sympathetic to Counselor Sharp. You know, I voted to discuss it, but I really can't support this because these decisions are based on, you know, epidemiological evidence in public health. That's that's going to be the driver. So it's not really going to matter what we say to the province because it this, our request won't factor into the decision making. You know, because it's really about public health, safety, you know, and they're still promoting social distancing. I'm not sure that this is going to affect Counselor Sharp's son, you know, playing for Man United. You know, the parks are still open. He can still go with his son and and do drills and stuff like that. It's not going to prevent him from going to the park and and doing things. But I honestly feel that reading the province isn't going to make a whit of difference because it's it's based on epidemiological data and and public health recommendations. And just because we want something doesn't mean we're going to get it. That's it.
Counselor Cadwell, you're up.
Yeah, Mayor Jordan, I would like to hear any, any, before we move further on this, I would like to hear comments from our our E, sorry, E O C committee. What, you know, it's based our, our, our senior, senior management team. So, yeah, that's, I'd like to hear some comments from them, too. That's it for me.
All right, Count, C A O Schlang.
To Counselor Cadwell, I mean, again, we won't do anything unless the province opens it up. Right now, the orders are till June ninth, and they're talking about an emergency to the end of June. And then we'd have to ensure, much like the province has always told us, then if they open it up, we have to ensure there's, everyone is safe, including the spectators, the volunteers, the referees. We wouldn't roll out anything until it was safe. So even if the province says something, we'd have to work with the the clubs and the associations to make sure everything was safe, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, C A O. Counselor Richie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I too, there's nobody wants to open the sports more than myself. I constantly, I still play sports all the time, actually help run one of these teams and a soccer team. And when I look at this, I mean, I think that the province has enough pressure trying to open things back up, whether it be sports, restaurants, there's all kinds of pressures coming out there. And we need to support our provincial government through these times. And, you know, I'm sure if we talk to any of them, there's nothing that they would want more than to open these things up. So it's not that I'm against this. I would love to see it sooner. But just like everyone said, when it comes to soccer, pretty much every soccer organization in the province has to be a part of the Ontario Soccer Association. And they've canceled things on top of it. So even if the municipalities decide to open things up, the Ontario Soccer Association may not open things up. So this is a lot bigger than just asking or sending some support to provincial government. And I also think that they have enough to handle, and I think that if it was, if they were able to open it up, they would. That being said, that's why I voted against the opening this up. But I'm still giving it thought to to support this motion or this recommendation as correspondence. Because like I said, I just think that the province has enough to deal with, and if if they could open it up, they would. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Richie. Counselor Sharp.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. Just to
Actually, Counselor Sharp, Counselor Vane hasn't spoken on the topic yet, so he needs to go before you, and then you can have your second turn after that. Thank you. Counselor Vane.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I spoke with the director of parks recently, and my understanding, the restrictions the province is putting is very high for any type of opening thing. But in all fairness, and I mean, I'm talking the same as I would say to any counselors, similar motion. All Counselor Sharp is asking is just to send a letter, just saying we would like to see that. It's not going to I don't think the province is going to come down and yell at us for sending the letter, but I think that we do need to support each other in these issues, and we're just sending a letter. That's so I will be supporting it for that reason only. I agree with you all. Listen, I am, somebody called me Captain COVID the other day because I keep sending stuff out about it. But and I am very much concerned. There was forty one children in Montreal that got COVID nineteen by going back to school the first week back. So I'm aware of the dangers, but I think what Counselor Sharp is asking is just send a note to say, hey, we have families and we want to be, make you aware. So I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vane. Counselor Sharp.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. Just to follow up on some of my my colleagues' comments is that Counselor Vardy said, like, we, they'll make the decision, but if we don't ask, if we don't ask, we won't be heard. And yes, they will make the decision based on expert advice, right? But they will, as politicians, they will consider what the general public wants and weigh it against the the expert advice. And so we can relay some support for outdoor sports. And and to to Counselor Bothwell's point, I think that that these soccer associations and baseball associations, some of them have canceled because of the restrictions. And I think that's that the province could also provide some funding for them to to get PPE or provide some training or some some guidelines to them how they can be safe, because some of these soccer associations, we look at the Soccer Association in Grimsby, it's run by volunteers. They're not experts, they're not doctors. They may not have the amount of time and resources that the province has. So so we can support opening outdoor sports, and it's just a letter of support to the province. And the province might weigh that in their decision about what what priorities they are going to look at in opening. And I think that some outdoor sports like baseball, for example, there's very little contact in baseball. You mean, you're, you're always, like, you can't hit each other. So like, I mean, there's, there's other, I mean, you rugby, I think there's a lot of contact in that. So, so ma- maybe there's some consideration that, that the province can have and, and for us to support that. I think it's just a letter, same as you would send via email, only it's sent from a council. And um, and I think that it, it does represent the people in Grimsby.
Thank you councillor Sharp. Councillor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to call the question.
Sure, the question has been called. I'll read the resolution. Moved by councillor Sharp, second by councillor Vane. Result that the town of Grimsby council endorsed to the province to support the reopening of outdoor sports and athletics. When the emergency order is lifted or the province is deemed safe to reopen. Recorded vote, councillor Bothwell?
Haven't heard one on that. I'm sorry, it's um, I just, I think I'm going to have to say no on it at this point. Sorry.
Councillor Dunstall?
It's a nay.
Councillor Frake?
Nay.
Councillor Cadwell?
Nay.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yay.
Councillor Sharp?
Yay.
Councillor Vane?
Yay.
Councillor Vardy?
Nay.
And myself, I'm a nay. I just um worry about uh, putting the um, putting pressure. More pressure on the province. The province already has a more pressure and I'd hate for them to uh, um, do anything on political pressure. Rather than the safety. So that's defeated. Where are we in the agenda now? Councillor Vardy, you have new business still that?
Yes, I just want to say.
Alright.
I'm looking forward to being deputy mayor and uh, assisting you Jeff and, or excuse me, Jeff, mayor, in uh, any way that I can.
Thank you councillor Vardy. It's nice to have you as deputy mayor effective today. Before we move into uh closed session, the next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty. At seven P M um, right here, and it will be a virtual meeting again. I'm pretty sure. And now um, we're going to move into close. Right. Oh yes, we're going to do a roll call before closed set, moving into closed session. Uh, the clerk's going to do a roll call.
So good evening, members of council. Before we begin the closed session, all members are reminded that any discussions enclosed are to remain confidential. As per procedural bylaw and our code of conduct for the council of the town of Grimsby. Before we begin, I need each member that is attending electronically to confirm the following. That you understand that matters are to remain confidential and confirm no one else is present with you. And confirm no one else can hear this closed session. Confirm that you are not using any electronic devices other than your tablet or computer for the purpose of this video conferencing only. And confirm that you are not recording this portion of the meeting. If you acknowledge all of the above, please reply with, I understand and confirm to all of the statements. Mr. Mayor?
I understand and confirm to all these statements.
Councillor Bothwell?
I understand and confirm to all the statements.
Thank you. Councillor Dunstall?
I understand and confirm to all the statements.
Councillor Frake?
I understand and confirm it will conform to all of these statements.
Thank you. Councillor Cadwell?
I understand and confirm to all the statements.
Councillor Ritchie?
I understand and confirm all these statements.
Thank you. Councillor Sharp?
I understand and I confirm all the statements.
Councillor Vane?
I understand and I confirmed all the statements.
Thank you. Councillor Vardy?
Understand and confirm all the statements. However, Bart, the one-eyed Shih Tzu, there's no guarantees, not going to repeat uh what he hears.
Thank you.
A mover and a seconder to move in closed. Councillor Vardy? Sorry, need a mover and a seconder councillor Vardy, seconded by councillor Bothwell. Moved by councillor Vardy, seconded by councillor Bothwell. Resolve that council meet and close session regarding the following, under section two, three, nine, two B of the municipal act two thousand and one. Personnel matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. Grimsby Public Library Board Member Selection. And recorded vote to go into closed, councillor Bothwell?
Yay.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yay.
Councillor Frake?
Yay.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yay.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yay.
Councillor Sharp?
Yay.
Councillor Vane?
Yay.
Councillor Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, a yay. So we are now in closed. Yep. Yeah, we just need a couple of minutes to uh. Yep. Yeah, we just need a couple of minutes to, uh, Yep, we just need a couple of seconds to get the live stream up and running again. All right, we're up and going, up and running now. Welcome back, everyone. Just need a mover and seconder for the resolution for the report. Moved by Counsel Vane, seconded by Counsel Ritchie. Moved by Counsel Vane, seconded by Counsel Ritchie, resolve that the confidential report GPL 20-6 dated June 1st, 2020 be received, and the Grimsby Town Council approves the appointment of the new board member as recommended by the selection committee. Recorded vote, Counsel Bothwell?
Yay.
Counsel Dunstall?
Yay.
Counsel Frake?
Yay.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yay.
Counsel Ritchie?
Yay.
Counsel Sharp?
Yay.
Counsel Vane?
Yay.
Counsel Vardy?
Yay.
Myself, I'm a yay. That's carried. Need a mover and seconder for the first, first reading of the bylaws. Counsel Ritchie? Seconded by Counsel Bothwell. Moved by Counsel Ritchie, seconded by Counsel Bothwell, resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw number 20-51 inclusive, and that be read a first time. Recorded vote, Counsel Bothwell?
Yay.
Counsel Dunstall?
Yay.
Counsel Frake?
Yay.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yay.
Counsel Ritchie?
Yay.
Counsel Sharp?
Yay.
Counsel Vane?
Yay.
Counsel Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, a yay. So that's carried. Counsel Vardy, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, I just wondered if I could add one thing to new business. I neglected to mention something.
Yeah, we'll let you.
Thank you.
Decision.
Um, I just want to let, just let people know that the premier said that anyone who wants to get tested for COVID can go directly to any testing center. Um, and you don't need to make an appointment. So if you are worried at all that you're COVID positive, or, um, if, if you, you know, one of my big concerns are asymptomatic carriers. And the benefits of the more testing we do, the better understanding we have of the epidemiology of this disease. So, um, I went and, you know, tested the system. Uh, I had the procedure done. It was very quick. It was painless, maybe a touch uncomfortable, but, uh, nothing. So I encourage anyone who has any any concerns or an interest to get, you know, to help contribute to the, the data set. Um, those, all the testing centers are open for drive-ins. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for that information, Counsel Vardy. Uh, now we need a mover and seconder to the second and third reading of the bylaws. Counsel Ritchie, Counsel Dunstall? Moved by Counsel Ritchie, seconded by Counsel Dunstall, resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw number 20-51 inclusive, read a first time, now be read a second and third time, and finally passed under the mayor and town clerk do sign and seal the same, and the rule of council to the contrary notwithstanding. Recorded vote, Counsel Bothwell?
Yay.
Counsel Dunstall?
It's a yay.
Counsel Frake?
Yay.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yay.
Counsel Ritchie?
Yay.
Counsel Sharp?
Yay.
Counsel Vane?
Yay.
Counsel Vardy?
Yay.
Myself, I'm a yay. So that's carried. Uh, meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Done before nine.